Okay, the regular. Oh, sorry. Okay, the regular meeting of the Wai'li Kahala Neighborhood Board Number Three is called to order. It's about seven oh one Thursday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And let's first introduce those of us first who are here, starting with Brian. Brian Wong.
Hello, everybody. I'm Brian Wong, Sub District Two.
Brian Wong, Sub District Two.
Okay. Okay, Richard Turbin, Sub District Three. And Sylvia?
Aloha, Sylvia. He made us Sub District Four.
Okay, do we have any other members of the board? Yes, Christian, you're online.
Christian DeCavato, Sub District Three. Good to see you all.
Okay, nice to hear from you, Christian. And yeah, when you speak, Christian, though, speak a little bit louder. Normally, you speak very loud, but coming in, you're a little bit, little bit soft. And we want to hear every golden word.
Is this good?
Fine, perfect, perfect. Okay. Any other, do we have any other members online? Okay, so right now, we don't, we just, we don't have a quorum. We just have four of us. Oh, yeah, definitely. I just wanted to check on the members. Yeah, please go, please go ahead.
John White, resident? John White, resident and Neighborhood Security Watch Coordinator?
Good evening, Derek Maishiro, Mayor's Representative.
Yes, we have others online, but you can introduce yourselves as you ask questions or speak. And we have, I have to introduce Dylan Buck is our, is our Neighborhood Board Assistant today. Thank you for pitching in. Appreciate, appreciate that you're here. Okay, time for the monthly, City and State Monthly Reports. Honolulu Honolulu Fire Department, are you in the room?
Yes, can you hear me?
Just a little louder.
Okay, I will try to speak up.
Very good.
My name is Captain Schubert. I'm with the Ka'umu'kei Fire Station. I'm going to give you the October twenty twenty-three incident statistics. We had two structure fires, one nuisance fire, one cooking fire, two activated alarms, twenty-seven medical calls, one mountain rescue, and one hazardous material incident. We also have a safety tip for the month. It deals with holiday cooking safety. We'd like to remind everyone to try to keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve rank second and third with both having nearly twice the daily average. Undattended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. So we recommend you stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you are cooking on the stove top. Stay in the home when cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. If you want a fried turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oil are not safe. These fryers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which can cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fryer that has been listed by a qualified testing laboratory. Do not leave fryers unattended when in use. And now I will see if there's any questions.
All right, any questions from board members? Okay, any questions from other attendees, residents? Okay, they're being, oh.
Richard, this is Martin. Can you hear me? This is Martin.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yes, okay, yeah. Go ahead, Martin.
Last month, we were going to ask the Fire Department to discuss the possibility of addressing fires in Diamond Head. And I don't know whether that was part of the discussion that was going to be taking place now or later on in the meeting.
Well, I think it should go, yeah, we want to release, you know, Honolulu Fire Department as soon as possible. Can you answer that question? You know, what is the situation of fire dangers and fire problems coming from the Diamond Head area? You know, caused by, you know, particularly caused by fires, cooking fires that might be started by, you know, unlawful campers, either on Diamond Head Beach or up, up the slopes of Diamond Head, where there are some camps.
And I'm particularly concerned because we saw in the news about the Mililani Malka Fire. And so when you have fires starting in fire, in ridges, it's difficult to reach them. And in Diamond Head, we have mixtures of kahvee and non-native grasses, which are very flammable.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. We do respond to Diamond Head fires. I could tell you, the HFD policy is when we are called to respond, we do respond to those fires and we handle the incident to the best of our, and safely as possible. As far as what we could do about reducing that number, that would really be more of a law enforcement type of situation. But I will throw this upstairs, see if there's anything we can do. And hopefully, next meeting, we'll be able to come back with some sort of response to that inquiry.
Okay, yeah. Do, have you seen an increase in, in risk of fires in Diamond Head? You know, on the slopes of Diamond Head or the beach of Diamond Head because of illegal campfires?
I, I know, I believe last month, we did respond, my, my company did respond to one and we extinguished the fire. The drier it is and the windier it is obviously creates more of a hazard for us and the environment. But, you know, it just depends on the, the season and the, the weather conditions, whether how hazardous it is for us.
Was, was that particular fire that you responded to, did that have anything to do with, you know, illegal camping or cooking fire?
Potentially, it was not investigated intensely, but there, there would be high expectations that it was, it was due to a person that was camping on the outskirts of the, the slope that, that created the fire.
Okay.
What kind of terrain was that in?
It was the outside of the slope, so we ended up extending lines. We brought in a tanker truck to help us with water supply and we extended our lines up the side of the slope. Yeah, it, it was steep and it was slippery, but we did our job. We, we extinguished the fire and put it out and nobody was injured during the incident.
How far can you extend your lines?
You know, we can, as far as we really need to, if worst case scenario, if we're not able to get our lines up the side of the mountain, we do have the helicopters that could come assist us. If, if the weather is, is acceptable and the, the conditions are acceptable for the helicopter. But just like they did in Mililani, we, we do have that resource that could come and assist us with dropping water onto the fire.
I just want to raise one incident I actually saw and I was shocked to see it happen. But down by Shangula, somebody in that area, I don't know exactly where, were setting off these floating lanterns that go in the air, they're powered by candles and they were floating along. And the wind was carrying them on the way to Diamond Head. And this is about six months to a year ago. And it was during the summer and I was absolutely shocked to see that someone was stupid enough to be sending off a string of several, at least a dozen of these periodically. They must have thought it was pretty to see all these lanterns floating along in the air, but they were floating directly to Diamond Head. It's all the police, but we couldn't, they couldn't locate who was setting them off. But it was pretty scary to think about people putting up lanterns that float in the air powered by fire going towards Diamond Head. And that was something that when those things hit, you don't know where the fire will end up because they're driven by the wind.
Okay, any, any more questions for Honolulu Fire Department? Okay.
Put mine in the Q and A.
Pardon me?
I put mine in the Q and A section, in the chat section. Basically, it was, do you have, in case of a wind-generated firestorm, is there an evacuation plan for the community?
So you're, you're talking about evacuation plans. Yeah, again, I would have to look in. I don't want to give you any misinformation. So I'd have to investigate that and then report back at the next meeting or have my cohort report back at the next meeting regarding our evacuation plans.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, our next meeting is going to be in January, the third Thursday in January. We are off on vacation in December, but if you, you or your colleague could come back and, you know, answers, you know, the, and give us HFD's opinion on the, you know, fire risk of illegal campers in the Diamond Head venue, that would be helpful. And also the evacuation plans.
Okay, I, I will put that in my report and hopefully get back to you. Yeah, I'm not sure who will be here in January, but it quite possibly could be me.
Okay, all right, any other questions for HFD? Okay, we'll move on to now the Honolulu Police Department.
Aloha, Lieutenant Taro Nakamura with HPD. These are stats for the month of October compared to the previous month. Motor vehicle thefts were five as compared to seven. Burglaries went down, there were four as compared to eleven. Thefts in general were, also went down. There were thirteen as compared to twenty and UEMVs, which is theft from autos, remained the same at nine and nine. The sum of total calls for service of six thousand three hundred eighty for the district. And further statistical information can be found at HonoluluPD.org. And then our safety tip for the month is business security tips. We've, we've had a, actually, we've had an island-wide rash of late night, early morning smash and grab type commercial robberies. I mean, not robberies, but burglaries of businesses when, when they're closed. So it's just a basic, basically some tips. A lot of them are common sense type tips for businesses that can help deter your, your business from being an easier target. So I will send this on via email to you folks if it hasn't been done so already. But basically, especially now since it's, it's the, the price of alarm systems have come, dropped dramatically and you can even get cameras at those big box type stores that, that hook up directly to Wi-Fi. Those things are, are great. Environmental design is key. Make your business less attractive for a burglary to, to get into. So secure doors or windows, if you can put stuff underneath windows that makes it difficult to get in, that's even better. And then lighting. We always suggest that have good lighting, not only on the inside, but also on the outside. So if the outside of the front door is well lit, it's less, less likely that somebody will pick that door to try to get into. But lastly, I just want to say, it's still under investigation right now, but we did, last night, we, our plainclothes units did catch a group of individuals that were, were, we might, we believe were committing some of these commercial burgs. So hopefully, those will die down in the near future. But we just wanted to put it out there that, that it is happening and to, please be aware of it. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions from board members for HPD? Yeah, Colin, please.
Yep.
Oh, Colin, by the way, I wanted to introduce you, have you introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Colin Fujiki. I am the representative for Sub District One.
Okay.
Lieutenant, I, I think I mentioned this quite a few times in, in our regular meetings. I'm not sure if you, you are still attending during the mid part of the session. But behind the Kahala Market, there's a lot of deliveries that take up the road on Keanu Street for the Kahala Market, all, all those shops in there. And they basically just double park a lot of people in, potentially even drop it down that, that two-lane road down to a single lane. And, you know, impede traffic, especially around that one turn, it really becomes a blind turn. And I just was wondering if there's anything that we can do about that. I know it's been ongoing. We, we did complain to the market a couple of times. I think immediately after the complaints, typically, they, they kind of self-manage. But I, I was there walking by the other day and I think there was a truck basically parked in the middle of the street from, from about six in the morning till after one o'clock throughout the whole day. And multiple trucks throughout the whole time. And I just, it's, I think it's, not only is it, I've been yelled at for asking people to move and they've told me to, to like, because I, I'm like trying to get out of my car, out of my parking stall, right, on the street parking. And there'll be a big semi there and blocking me to, to get out of the road. I've seen this with other residents, as well as just really a couple of head and close, near, near misses on head-on collisions, as well as crossing the street becomes very difficult in that area. I know that's not a designated crosswalk, but there's no crosswalks in that area. So it's just, it's, it's a safety issue. It's a, you know, indecency neighborhood. Our street is not a loading zone, you know, they're unloading and loading in the street. They actually pile pallets of stuff in the middle of the street.
So Keanu, between, between where and where?
Right behind Kahala Market on Keanu. Or I guess was Kuopu Market, I'm trying. Kuopono Marketplace, I think they read, there's a name, but that, that property that they recently made that, you know, the, the Jay Dolan's.
What's the nearest cross street?
It would be Hunakai and Keanu.
Hunakai. Okay, and then what is the worst times?
Right, first Hawaiian Bank, like, sorry, what was that?
What would be the, the worst times?
I, I mean, I see trucks out there from six in the morning to one o'clock, pretty much consistently.
Okay. What I can recommend is.
Throughout the morning.
Yeah, what I can recommend is that, of course, we all have to live and work in the same neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So if we don't have to cite people, that would be better. But if the situation, you know, if you gone, if you've gone and tried to talk to those folks and
We have several times.
They give you the cold shoulder. Of course, it is against traffic laws to double park and load and unload. So when you see that kind of situation happening and, you know, you've, you've tried other avenues, then just, just call nine one one and we'll have an officer respond. Just explain to them, hey, we've tried talking to, you know, the businesses and the drivers and, and they still doing it. So.
Yeah.
If.
And I get to just try to do their jobs, you know, I mean, I understand they're trying to do their jobs and they're trying to.
Tough issue, but if they're blocking you in, you can't get out, you, you can't work either, so. Yeah, I would suggest just call nine one one.
Okay, I mean, is there any, you know, I appreciate if you guys did just did some rounds there. I mean, it is throughout the whole day. So I mean, it's just, if you could help enforce that as well. Like I just mentioned, we brought it up in this meeting.
Sure, and what, what we can do is.
Multiple times for the past two years, maybe three, since that market opened. There is a loading zone, they have a driveway through loading areas so that they choose not to use. I mean, I got steep areas, but.
What we can do is, we can, we have a community policing team also. Although they don't attend these neighborhood board meetings, but that's a different issue. What we can do is, we'll ask them to reach out to, I, I'm suspecting, I don't want to pick one business, but I'm suspecting the supermarket is the biggest.
Honestly, it's all the businesses. I, I mean, I see them going to all the businesses. There's so many trucks that do it. I mean, to, to, like I said, it's, it is literally a truck there, at least one truck from six in the morning to at least one o'clock. I, I, I don't know. It's, it's continuous.
We'll ask them to go, go out and speak with the businesses also.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, we, we've asked the businesses here several times, engaged them several times, engaged the market manager, engaged the food land manager. Yeah.
Well, if we, if we talk to them and they still persist and just call nine one one and nobody can complain, they got cited.
Yeah.
You've talked to them, we've talked to them and.
I think it's more than just getting stuck in, like, I, I've definitely been close to being hit. Because it's a large truck, right, when you're trying to cross a street and that large truck is parked in the middle of the street and I, I'm walking with my children across the street, it's, it's, there's, it limits the visibility, especially on that turn.
Sure.
The, the turn that guys kind of goes, because it's a kind of a horseshoe, right? It's not, it goes around to Hunakai as well. Not, yeah. Right, yeah, there's a loop, right? So it's just on those, the near turn, especially more closer to the, the food land side of it on the backside. So it's, I've definitely been close to being hit. I've seen other people getting close to being hit, especially when walking dogs and the dog's leading, right? And you, you see those people pulling the dog back real quick because those guys, you know, obviously there are people, you know, it's twenty-five miles an hour, probably shouldn't be twenty-five miles an hour through there, but it is what it is. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Just feel free to call nine one one if it gets, I mean, that bad, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Colin, and that problem persists. Let's call them back early in the, early part of next year. I, I have a question, Lieutenant. So I've been walking, I've been walking Kahala Beach on the weekends, weekend mornings. Thus far, I mean, we have had illegal campers on the beach. And, but thus far. I'm sorry? Okay, but thus, but thus far, we haven't had the problem with tents coming up. But the last few, the last few weekends when I've been walking the beach, the two tents have popped up that look like they're tents for illegal campers. I, I haven't checked it because I don't want to put myself in jeopardy. But is there any, is it possible for HPD to patrol that? At least, you know, at least upon occasion to check for illegal tents popping up there?
Okay, Kahala Beach is a long beach. Where, where's, where's the nearest?
Okay, it's a long beach, yeah. It's, it's pretty close to the, to the Wai'li Beach Park. Let's say there's, the one is, oh, maybe thirty, fifty yards west of Wai'li Beach Park and then there's another one about maybe seventy or eighty yards.
Okay, sure, we've, I don't know if you know this, but I, I've recently switched, well, the department in general has switched hours. So we, we have two, two watches and I'm in charge of the night watch now, which runs from six in the morning till seven thirty in the, I mean, six in the evening till seven thirty in the morning. So is the problem more during the night?
Well, yeah, during the night, because I mean, I'm walking.
Yeah, I'll have my guys go and check it tonight. And then if it continues, just feel free to call nine one one when you see it and we'll, we'll follow up on that. But I'll have them check it tonight.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Are any other questions for Lieutenant from board members? How about residents and other interested parties? We got Nuela, okay.
Oh, hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Lieutenant Nakamura, for being here at the meeting. I just wanted to send out a little bit of good news. Between District Six and Seven, the Honolulu Police Department is actively making sure that we solve the moped problem down at Makalee Beach Park and at Leahie Park. I'd like to thank you and please keep, keep it up. The neighborhood super appreciates it and that's what I have to say. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome, ma'am. It, it is a difficult ongoing problem because a lot of them are tourists and the moped companies want to make money and they don't give out the best directions to the people renting the mopeds. So we'll, we'll keep working on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I had a question too. We, we have a moped problem too on Diamond Head Road at all hours at night. There are just people on mopeds riding up and down, racing. And it doesn't necessarily be limited during the weekends. It's all kinds of hours and we suspect that a lot of it is the illegal campers on Diamond Head because they're just going at all hours, so it's not tourists, sure. And I'm not sure there would be residents. So if you guys could increase the hours and just checking all the mopeds that are going up and down Diamond Head Road from between Triangle Park and Lighthouse, because very constant, especially late at night. And it's.
Sure, that's, that's a, that's a well-known problem. We do patrol that area actively throughout the night, not just for loud mopeds, but how can I say, other activities at the parks. So, yes, well, I will remind them to keep making checks there.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, also racing late at night on Kahala Avenue, too.
Way to Wai'li Beach Park.
Yeah, yeah. All right, and thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all right, there being none. Thank you so much, Lieutenant. We appreciate you coming to our meetings and your, your good words and good advice. We'll go to Board of Water Supply now.
All right.
Lorna, you there?
I'm here. Can you folks hear me?
Yes, yeah, loud and clear.
Okay, good. Good afternoon, good afternoon, good evening. I do have three reports, three main breaks report, but looking at them, I think it might just be two of them. It happened on October fourth and fifth, both on Wai'ohinu Drive. So that was, again, October fourth and fifth that I have on my notes here. The announcement I have for this month is a pretty quick one. It's about our 2024 poster and poetry contest. So it's being launched right now and the contest is open to kindergarten to sixth grade and the poetry contest is open to seventh graders to twelfth graders. And the theme for this year is our water, our home. And the deadline to enter is February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. So if you want more information, please go to our website at www.bordofwatersupply.com/wcwcontest. That's the announcement I have. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, any questions from board members for Lorna? Okay, any questions from other attendees? Okay, there being none. Thank you very much, Lorna, and you have a happy, happy holiday season.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody and happy holidays.
Okay, filling of vacancies, we still have that one vacancy for Sub District Two. Any candidates? Still looking, all right, keep on looking. Oh, oh. Oh, okay. All right, Peter, are you, you are on line there? Is that Peter? Are you muted?
This is the first time I've used my computer.
Okay, all right, Peter, now, yeah, just talk up, we can hear you now, but.
I've been here since seven fifteen. I would have been on time, but trying to get that four hundred and fifty-three digit HTTPS, et cetera, was, it was challenging.
Would have been easier just to drive here.
Well, that's another problem. Thank you for asking.
Okay, you have a que, well, thank you.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, thank you, Peter, and you are again, Sub District Four, okay. All right, okay, very good. All right, so reports of members attendance at other meetings. Any Neighborhood Board members attend other meetings this month? Brian, you have?
Yeah, Rich, myself and Lucinda, Community Personnel, was on our board. We attended the Kuleo Neighborhood Board Meeting last week just to share a little bit about what has transpired regarding the. Uh just to share a little bit about um what has transpired regarding the uh the border, the uh the line that we were talking about. Uh basically just sharing our updates with them, nothing further, no action from that um discussion.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, yeah, thank you for attending that meeting, Brian. Um, okay, uh elected officials, um Governor Josh Green's representative, Michael Buck, are, Michael, are you here? Okay, uh anybody else representing the governor? All right, there being none, we'll move to um the Department of Transportation, how highway divisions representative Casey Abbe. Casey, are are you are you here? I'd be surprised if you're not.
Yes, uh good evening, uh Chair uh Turbin, members of the Wyli Call Neighborhood Board, Casey Abbe from the State DOT Highway Division. On installation of the new overhead directional sign westbound on the H one freeway was installed during the night of last month's board meeting, October nineteen. If you drive by the sign, you'll notice that the Kiloway Avenue sign looks better than the Wyli sign because it is a new sign. We were able to reuse the existing Wyli Avenue sign. Uh, I did a field inspection this past Tuesday the fourteenth and noticed our maintenance crew removed most of the graffiti from the exit twenty seven sign, but unfortunately they couldn't remove all the graffiti. So I'm working with our districts to try to replace the sign. Uh, at last month's meeting, I mentioned that our maintenance crew painted over the black colored graffiti, but a new blue graffiti returned. Fortunately, our few during my field inspection on Tuesday, our maintenance crew were able to paint over the blue graffiti. Uh, this concludes my report, I can take any questions.
Okay, um, Colin, you have a question?
Yeah, Casey, I really appreciate you handling this graffiti, you you always have such great reports. Um, I did notice that the traffic signal box on Kilaway Ave does have quite a bit of graffiti on it right now. Um, and I think it was something else too, but I I've been noticing the one on the the Kilaway of traffic signal box definitely has it.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Casey from board members?
I have a question for Casey. Uh, Casey, as always, thank you so much for, you know, being so responsive to our requests. Um, I just have a a quick concern that I'd like to to bring up. Um, I've noticed your crews repairing a lot of the irrigation in some planter boxes and uh street dividers as well, which is amazing to see. Uh, my only concern is that the irrigation is now running in the middle of the day, uh which is just very wasteful for water. Uh, if it was changed to the nighttime, it would actually help the grass become more drought resistant and would help us cut down on the amount of water we're using. Um, and so if if that's a change that we could make, um I I would like to to put in my preference to have it made.
Sure, and this is along on the Wyli Avenue, um the on ramps or just?
This is coming down uh Hunakai and then also as well as uh oof, uh I'm forgetting the cross street right now, give me two seconds, I can pull it up on my phone. Um, but uh, yeah, it seems like the the irrigation just kind of uh runs uh during the middle of the day. So during Hunakai with the cross street of Pahoah and Pueo, uh there's a large uh large divider over there. Um, but the irrigation, your irrigation crews recently repaired the irrigation, which is again amazing to see. And then coming down Kilaway Ave as well, uh coming basically from Kahala Mall, going all the way to I believe it would be actually Hunakai as well, there's some large uh monkey pod trees over there. Um, but if the if that irrigation could be changed on the timing alone, uh might help us all save a couple bucks.
Okay, yeah, I think I I double check to make sure that um uh roads you're talking about is assigned to the highways, state highways, or if it's assigned to the city and county, uh I gotta double check on that.
Yeah, and if uh if not, just uh feel free to to either text me or email me the uh the person I should talk to and I'll put in that request with them.
Okay, yeah, that's that's probably the city's uh mayor's rep that you would have to talk to if it's if it's on the city's roadway.
Perfect, and we got Derek here tonight?
Yes.
Hi, Derek, thank you.
In the house.
All right, perfect. Uh, well, then uh basically Ctrl C, Ctrl V, everything I just said uh to you, Derek. If that could be a possible change we can make.
Okay, but I will check out um the streets systems on uh state highways under Wyli Avenue and the on and off ramps.
All right, thank you, Casey.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions uh from board members? For Casey, any questions from other attendees for Casey? Okay, well, thank you again very much and uh we'll see you in January, Casey. All right, okay, so now we have uh Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, Derek Mayashiro.
Hi, good evening, Chair, uh board members. So just a couple highlights uh from the mayor's office. Uh, all the mayors toured the Lahaina wildfire uh zone last month and uh Mayor Blangiardi described it as as just devastating. He's tasked the managing director to assemble a working group to review Awahu's preparedness. So there's over twenty city departments working with federal and state agencies as well to review and assess um our preparedness uh on our island. Some other things going on actually in Kapolei. So the city opened the Kapolei Convenience Center, it's a waste disposal facility located at ninety one dash one eighty four Ka'omi Loop for anyone who wants to dispose of large bulky items. And also at Kapolei, our satellite city hall has extended hours from seven until five. Our employees are part of a pilot group who are working ten hour shifts. The only uh the only exception is that on on weeks where there is a state holiday, the schedule reverts back to an eight to four uh customer service uh operations. Um, and that's just because the the four ten hour days doesn't work uh when there's a holiday during the week. Also, the Neighborhood Commission Office is hiring Neighborhood Board assistants to engage in public awareness for community support. Neighborhood assistance help coordinate with Neighborhood Board Chair and produce written reports to members of the public. If you are interested, send your resume to nco at honolulu dot gov or call the Neighborhood Commission Office at eight oh eight seven six eight three seven one zero. And just following up on a question or inquiry from Board Member Wong from last month. He asked if the Department of Facility Maintenance could look at the overgrowth of roots uh roots growing on the median on Kilawaya next to the Kamaki YMCA, Maoka towards Wilson School. It's affecting the pavement, potential hazard for the streets uh and possibly if it could be included in the complete streets plan. Uh, the city's Department of Transportation Services responded that unfortunately the area is outside the limits of the planned roadway rehabilitation complete streets project. Uh, the segment of Kilaway Ave was last rehabilitated and and repaved. The median tree roots were trimmed, but the aggressive roots, aggressive root control was deemed too risky for the health of the trees. Our Department of Facility Maintenance has responded that there is a planned rehabilitation of streets project for Kilaway Ave, Avenue Makai of Wyli Avenue being managed by the Department of Design and Construction. And the Department of Facility Maintenance will be checking with the Department of Design and Construction to see if that area can be included in the rehabilitation portion of that project. And with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to address them if I can.
Okay, um, any any questions, uh any questions for Derek uh from board members? Okay, um, well, let me ask you, so Derek, when you're talking about the Kilawaya, you know, the complete streets work on Kilawaya, what I heard uh is a plan to uh drop the lanes on Kilawaya to one lane, one car lane in each direction. And the other existing, the two other existing lanes would be converted into uh bike lanes? Is that this is what I've been told the plan is? Uh, can you tell us, is that the plan and is that gonna, is that gonna go anywhere?
I would have to check with our Department of Transportation Services on what is the uh, what's being planned over there. I I personally don't know, but I I'm happy to check on it.
Yeah, could you please check on it? I don't want to be too early, you know, crying wolf, wolf, but uh that would be uh an absolute disaster.
Chair.
Yes.
If I may, um, just to share with you, it was something that caught my eye as well. Uh, the complete streets project for Kilawaya. And there was a um presentation of a webcast uh that was done after our September um meeting on the twenty eighth of September, they they had a webcast that they had a little presentation uh showing uh the complete streets options that are in planned in the design phase right now. And to your point, uh right now, a greater portion of Kilaway Avenue in that design plan shows it to be coming one lane on both sides. In uh they're presenting two options at this time, um and in both cases, um it drops the lane to one lane on each side. Um, I I looked at the the plan, I I um actually um watched the recorded presentation, I reviewed the ninety pages, I don't know, it was eighty four pages slides uh that they had presented, and I believe that there are other options that could be looked at based on the information that they're providing that can um accommodate um what they want to do with the complete streets is to make it safer, um perhaps lessen the uh to include lessening speed limits, making it just a safer uh area for everyone that uses it uh and not having to do um what they want to do with the options of having just one lane on each side. Um, I have some bullet points that I want to share if um if there's time. Uh, but to the point that I believe that there are other options and what they shared on there that they could look at and uh we could probably be involved in that discussion. Twenty twenty five is when it's supposed to happen, they're they're taking more inputs as we go along. But the initial design does have a greater portion of Kilaway shown to be one lane on each side right now.
Why don't we put it on the January agenda? Um, that issue, because I mean with all of the with the Kahala Mall, with the new market, with you know, the with McDonald's, with the other new shopping center. I mean, from Pahoah up to, got a seat going from Pahoah up to Wyli Avenue, there are probably six, at least six uh exits and exits, exit and entry driveways for all of those commercial, uh you know, commercial enterprises. And uh on the other side of the street, of course, you have the uh, you have the park and then you have the church and then you have more office buildings and again, you have a lot of exits and entryways to turn that into one lane in each direction is, for want of another word, absolutely nuts. There's going to be so many accidents, uh I've, there already are a lot of accidents now. But if it's one lane, there's going to be accidents, there's going to be backlogs. And what if, God forbid, there's a fire and a need for rapid evacuation from Kahala to just have one lane going each way and a bike lanes that are gonna be hardly used is can create disasters like we had in in Lahaina, you know, with a hundred deaths or more. And I think also on that evacuation issue um that we're talking about, that we'd like to have a report on from the mayor's office, the other problem is taking away that lane on Alokeia Street going going towards the freeway, all that commuter traffic where you can't get out of the parking garages and you can't get onto Alokeia Street to go home or pick up your kid at school now because of that new bike lane that nobody has used, literally, nobody uses it. And God forbid, if there's an evacuation order, a fire, a tsunami, you were gonna have deaths there, I mean, death by, death by bike lanes. Too many bike lanes in the wrong places that are not being used that are creating, you know, very hazardous conditions for the population at large. I mean, can you, let's put that, we'll put that on the agenda for January, but let's have some answers, you know.
I'll see if my comments for the January meeting then, because I do have several points that point out some things in the presentation and some additional information uh relative to other options.
I'm sure your comments are more analytical than mine, Brian. Okay, um, uh, any other questions for Derek from board, board members? Okay, I did get, I I did get of like uh three o'clock this afternoon an email uh from a resident, Kate Pantorilla, a resident of the uh and the Secretary of the Kahala Beach condo board, and the complaint is too many weddings on Kahala Beach. Yeah, uh, early in the morning, I mean, I see them too, it when I walk the beach, there's so many weddings going on and and uh uh, you know, uh, not only wedding parties, but photographer photographers for family portraits. And uh they're uh the complaint also is photographers are leaving heavy equipment over the property line for the Kahala Beach condos and uh and um you know, so um they're wondering if uh there has been ordinance ordinances regarding weddings uh in uh installed for Wyman Alley Sherwood Forest and Lanakai Beach and are hoping that maybe there can be an ordinance uh, such an ordinance for Kahala Beach. Okay, all right, thank you, any other, yes, Sylvia?
I, are you said in the morning, afternoon?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In the afternoon, when I walk by Wyli on the beach, I see lots of people who are married and getting pictures done, so I don't think it's only in the morning, in the afternoon as well.
All right, uh, any other questions uh for Derek uh from uh residents and other attendees? Okay, thank you very much, Derek, you're doing a great job uh communicating for this board uh to the mayor's office, appreciate it. Um, Councilmember Tommy Waters, is Tommy here or one of his assistants?
I I am, can you hear me, Chair Turbin?
Oh, loud, oh, loud and clear.
Wonderful, well, good evening, Chair Turbin and members, nice to see you all. I'd like to start off by talking about the complete streets project that that you folks mentioned a few minutes ago. You know, I met with DTS and my initial response to the Department of Transportation Services that why fix a problem that's not, it's not broken, right? There is no problems on Kilaway Ave. Um, I'm gonna invite uh it's Ms. Espial, who is the head of Complete Streets with DTS. I saw you on the news, by the way, Rich, and and you and everybody else um said exactly what I feel as well, that it's not necessary. The only thing I like about that plan is that they want to build sidewalks at the at the area by um Kamaki Middle School. That's the only thing I like about that that plan, but what DTS does is they have a list like a queue for repaving streets. And we're not up to get that area repaid for a few years. But in anticipation of the repaving, they're coming up with this plan. And everyone I've talked to about it says, no, it's ridiculous, we don't want it. So I'll continue to be the advocate, but I do want to ask the board, perhaps next month, to put it on the agenda and maybe even take a vote in front of Ms. Espial, so she knows that, hey, look, we don't want it. Second thing, dealing with weddings. So the, with the exception of the. So the, with the exception of the beach park right next to Wyman Country Club, the city can, can regulate that, right? Where there's a beach park, the rest of the Kahala Beach is state. But I'm happy to work with my state counterparts to see if we can work together to, to limit them. One of the things I thought would be a great idea, because we don't want to say local people can't go down there and take pictures of their family members or graduation pictures or whatnot, but have a permit system. You know, you want to go down there, you have a permit and you pay for it and we only allow a certain amount and it's only during certain days of the week, right? And I think you're right, Rich, that, that when my colleague Esther Kia Aina got passed a bill limiting weddings out of Sherwood Forest and in Wymanalo, they're moving elsewhere. So again, if you want to put this on your agenda next month, have a vote on it. I'm happy to draft up an ordinance limiting weddings in our neighborhood as well. I do notice that on your calendar or on your agenda in subsection eight, well, seven C, you talk about the primary urban center development plan. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's, it's a document that's done every 10 years and it's supposed to guide development going forward. I met with Chair Turbin and a few other folks about this. I've submit testimony consistent with what we talked about, Rich, to the planning commission. It was interesting, I had staff attending for me because I was in a hearing on the council, but looks like the planning commission is taking us very seriously. Couple of things I wanted to do is, was limit height and density in Kahala, as well as protect view planes. So that's exactly what my testimony did, basically. I just want you, perhaps we should even get DPP to come and present to the neighborhood boards, the plan, just so you folks can see what's going on in our city. I do want to announce that, oh, one thing, one more thing. With regard to the budget, it's coming up. I'm sure the mayor and the departments are working on their priorities and then they submit their budget to the council on March 1st. It's not too early to start thinking about capital improvement projects that we want for our neighborhood and let me know and then I'll advocate for that to put it into the budget. Lastly, on November 28th, there's going to be a planning and zoning committee hearing as well as a housing sustainability and health special hearing. For the plant, for the zoning committee, there is a somewhat controversial project for at 1500 Kapilani Boulevard where they want to build a condo hotel. You know, it's outside of the convention center district, which hotels are allowed like the Alamo Hotel. It's kind of controversial and if you folks have an opinion on that, please weigh in. I was encouraging the developer to build housing. As you know, the, the governor has an emergency proclamation dealing with housing and I thought we, we don't need the condo tell there, we need housing there. But anyway, if you folks want to weigh in, please do. And then for the housing sustainability and health, I've asked for the, we're going to ask the Board of Water Supply to update the council on what's going on on Red Hill. So please tune in to those hearings on the 28th and please participate if, if you have the urge to do so. But available for questions, Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Tommy, and you really have been an excellent advocate for our community and really appreciate the time that you gave, Lassinda, myself and others, back in October about our concerns. And you were, I think, strategically astute, which we really appreciate. Questions for Chair Waters from, from neighborhood board members?
I have a, a quick question for Councilman Waters. Councilman, always a pleasure to see you. Thank you again for, for attending as always. On the, on the issue of capital improvements and crossing over into the permitting for the weddings, maybe we could make this a win-win for the community as you talk to your state contacts. You know, Kahala has beautiful beaches and it's lovely that people appreciate them. So if the money from the permits to operate their businesses there could go to capital improvements at the beach parks at some sort of restoration that, you know, adds value to the community in a way that we don't feel as, as overrun with these photographers, with, you know, these, these people conducting business on the beach. I mean, that, that could potentially be a really good win-win for everybody and just, you know, even add more value to the product that they're offering.
I love that idea, Christian. Certainly, we could use help with our comfort stations, islandwide. They, they sure could use the help. And, and, and one of the things I'm advocating for, by the way, islandwide is for money in the Parks Department's budget to, to fix up the comfort stations. There, a lot of them are in really bad shape.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Christian.
Any other questions from board, from board members for Chair Waters? Okay, what about residents and other attendees of this meeting? Any questions for Chair Waters? Noella? Okay, go ahead, Noella.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair Waters. I'd like to thank you and your team for, especially your assistant, Adam, for helping us out with the Makale Beach moped debacle. I, I really, really appreciate all the work that you folks have put into it and please continue to keep up the good work because it's working. It's a, it's a little stagnant right now, but between District Six and Seven and you folks and HPD and everybody else, you know, we're getting it done because it really is a sad thing. That's a very nice part. So thank you very, very much and please thank Adam.
Sure will. Thank you, Noella.
You're very welcome, sir. Aloha.
Okay, any other questions or comments from attendees? Okay, well, Tommy, thank you for attending our meetings and for your help for our community and this board. We'll put Complete Streets for Kilauea and the beach wedding issue on the January agenda. We're all taking a little vacation in December. And also we'll keep the, the primary urban center development plan on the agenda too. So anytime you want to bring people from the city who are working on that, please do. We'd be happy to hear from them and put them on the agenda. Okay? All right. And so happy holidays. Okay, thank you. And Representative Bert Kobayashi, you're here. So maybe Tommy, you can hang on for a couple more minutes and see how you can partner with Bert on some of these state-city, joint state-city issues like the beach, like Kahala Beach.
Good evening, board members. I have some very, very bad news. This is the Monday issue of the Star advertiser, Front Page. It says on Oahu, there are now more than 30 active sites of little fire ants across over 200 acres from Kahuku down the entire Windward Coast to Hawaii Kai and Kahala, unquote. Fire ants are one of the world's worst pests. They are highly obnoxious, have a very bad sting, have virtually no known predators. They are hard to get rid of. The normal spraying routine is six to eight weeks for a year. We have these little fire ants on all islands except Molokai. The island where it started was the Big Island. They have given up eradication efforts, given up. Their strategy is now controlled. But these little fire ants can render virtually any outdoor space unlivable, unusable. I don't know whether this newspaper article is accurate. The head of the, of Department of Agriculture, State Department of Agriculture, the chair of the Ag Board told me that to her knowledge, there are no infestations in Kahala. But the problem is that the Ag Department isn't the one doing the eradication. They are limited, or most of their activities seem to be limited to inspection of nurseries and the control of plants being transported intra-island. The eradication efforts are through the Invasive Species Council, DLNR, Department of Land Natural Resources, and the Little Ant Laboratory, which is under University of Hawaii. Anyway, I have upcoming meetings with, release one of them and we'll schedule another meeting to find out about little ant infestations in Kahala. But the problem here is that with over 30 active sites on Oahu, we're probably looking at the tip of the iceberg. So easily multiples of 30. And given the way those, these ants live and propagate, it's almost a nightmare, I, I think. I have friends on the Big Island who fight the little fire ants weekly, monthly, and they've been doing it for, in one case, for over two years and not winning. So anyway, that's bad news, but we'll try to see what we can do. I've been in touch with the governor's office. Governor's office has not released $500,000 that was appropriated by the legislature, at least as of two days ago. And not declared a emergency, which would help with, you know, hiring personnel, procurement, and also use of other funds. But I think it should be declared an emergency. This, this little fire ant pest is extraordinarily invasive and just a terrible, terrible pest. Anyway, I've sent you by email this report. Basically, this report was written like three days ago. Red Hill has made more progress than expected. They've gotten rid of, they've transferred 99% of their fuel, but that only means that there's a million gallons left. And of course, the last known big spill that was measured was only 27,000 gallons. So even with 99% of the fuel, they still represent a very major, maybe the most major environmental threat on this island. But it's good that they're making progress and faster than what they had even planned. Number two, the state finally did a gun buyback. Previous gun buybacks and collections have been done by the police, the counties. Healthcare loan repayment. This is a also first ever $30 million effort, one of two parts in trying to attack the decade-old problem of healthcare workforce. So that's sort of like another huge step and also a first. Previously, frankly, I was disappointed with the UH School of Medicine because their attitude was if it doesn't help the School of Medicine, we're not interested. This loan program provides loans to people at med schools, at professional schools on the mainland. And of course, as you know, there are more potential doctors studying medicine in med schools on the mainland than on Oahu, obviously. You know, we only got like 55 seats per class. So, you know, doesn't take a genius to know that problem is better solved by Hawaii residents in med schools on the mainland, not just UH at school. And on the back is something that's an attempt to summarize some of the things about Maui wildfires. And this is, of course, going to be an ongoing situation. And Governor this past week essentially redirected $170 million away from previously appropriated items for some unknown use related to Maui wildfires. The problem is that some of these things that he restricted money for include things that we've been working on for, for many, many years. The biggest item being $64 million to fix the leaking roof at the Hawaii Convention Center. That roof has been leaking for years. We have lost conventions in Hawaii because they don't want to use our facility. And what are you going to do? Use half the facility or, you know, just abandon half the, half the conventions? And I just don't understand that. You know, with, with legislature failed to provide funds for the leaking roof and finally, when it does, governor restricts it. I don't know, you know, what the thinking at all about, about that because eventually the leak is going to get worse. You know, it's, it's only been there for about three years. So anyway, that's some of the comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Bert. Any questions for, for Representative Kobayashi from board members?
I have two quick questions for the representative.
Go ahead, okay, go ahead, Christian.
In regards to the, the fire ants, I know that DLNR is struggling to fill up their personnel and that responding to fire ants is time intensive. It requires, you know, someone taking time to drive on site, inspect, treat, and then come back several times. Is it possible for us to help create a public-private partnership with, you know, landscaping crews or maintenance crews who are already on the ground and providing some form of compensation to, to point out these issues as they see them, to help address them? Just, you know, utilizing private personnel already on the ground to help address these issues?
Yes, I, I think that's possible, particularly if there is a governor's emergency declaration. You can get around many of the, as I said previously, procurement issues.
Well, that would be marvelous to see and, you know, it'd be, be nice to be able to cut this issue off before it becomes too large for us to control. In regards to the medical school, sort of thumbing their nose at your request for assistance with this medical debt issue, I would ask you to-
That was previous- That was previous.
Pardon?
That was previous. They, they now have thirty million dollars for a whole variety of medical health personnel going to school both in Hawaii and on the mainland.
That's good to hear. My father suffers from Parkinson's, but before he became unable to enjoy his life in its current quality, uh, he was a doctor before that. Um, most of my income, most of my time goes to help pay for his medical bills and the way that he suffers. And so I would ask you to remind them that, you know, this is a personal issue for them as well. Doctors get sick, doctors become ill, and that medical debt can strike anyone, anywhere, at any time, no matter how high on the horse they may sit. Um, so it is a very, it's saddening to see that it took a while for them to come around, um, to this issue, but it can happen to any of them at any time.
Agreed.
Okay.
Totally.
All right. Um, thank you, Christian. Um, Brian, you've got some questions?
Uh, just a real quick comment, I guess, regarding the ants. Um, just wanted to share, recently I saw a news story on TV. I, I'm remiss as to who was the agency, but it was a state agency and, and it bothered me that, um, the person that was speaking regarding the issue with the ants was kind of hedging or tentative in, um, exploring options to, that impact the agriculture, uh, industry here because of the economic impact and such. So I'm, I'm just concerned that, um, there isn't a common thread of urgency. Uh, and I would hope that there is, uh, that it is an urgent issue throughout, um, the various departments that would be involved with this.
Well, I hope so. Um, many of our state agencies are semi-captive of their stakeholders. And oftentimes, their stakeholders are the people in the industry.
Okay.
Maybe shouldn't have said that too, too straightforwardly. But that, that's-
Yeah, if it's a fact, it's a fact.
My opinion, anyway.
Yeah, um, okay, other, other board members? Oh, other, other board members who would like to ask Bert questions or make a comment? Okay, uh, well, let me just ask you this. On the, um, the weddings on Kahala Beach, is that something the city can handle? Or what, or does the state have to weigh in, uh, because it's on DLN, DLNR land?
Uh, well, it's not on DLNR land. It's on public land up to the high wash of the waves.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, a permit system might be possible. It's one of these things that's sort of like difficult to control because obviously the public has access to the beach twenty-four seven. Um, Sylvia mentioned seeing wedding photographers in the afternoon. Uh, a couple of months earlier this year, I remember seven AM seeing a wedding, um, bridal couple taking photos, uh, with a two-person crew.
Okay.
Seven AM.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe you can kind of put your heads together with, uh, Chair Waters' office and try to come up a plan with a plan that would help us. Okay, thank you. Um, Representative Mark Hashim, uh, are you here or staff member?
Just point of order.
Yeah.
Um, do we have to, uh, report anything on the debt, the questions there? Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Um, okay, Representative Mark Hashim is not here. Senator Stanley Chang, is he here or, uh, staff member?
Uh, yeah, or just, uh, one sec. All right. Yes, um, so just, uh, some updates here. The Department of-
Can, um, yeah, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes. I'm Joshua Scawesteve. I'm, uh, intern for Senator Stanley Chang. So, uh, here we go. All good? All right.
Okay, need to speak up?
All right, yes. Can you hear me? All good?
Yes, but try to, uh, not move your head too much, uh, and stay close.
I'm gonna get some earbuds. You, is there, uh, can you move along and I'll just be back in a sec?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's possible. Um, so do you get some earbuds? Um, Residents' Community Concerns, um, that's the next item on the agenda. I did bring up the concern of Kate Pantanilla about beach weddings. Was there another you? Sylvia, you've got somebody, uh, yeah?
I had a complaint about transportation on a Sunday morning at six AM. I was on Paikau, which is by Triangle Park, and I was gonna turn right into Diamond Head Road going toward KCC. And the security guard told me that the road was closed. So I asked him, can I turn left on Diamond Head Road and go toward Waikiki? He said, he didn't know. He said, drive that way. If it's not okay, somebody will stop you. But I didn't get stopped. But I just thought that if the roads are closed, that they could share with us at the Neighborhood Board or put signs up to let people know that you can't go that way. Thank you.
Uh, which, uh, which, uh, who is the security guard working for? The event or, um, or, or KCC? Do you know?
It was on Diamond Head Road, so it was not for KCC. It was, um, by Triangle Park. So it was more, uh, I don't know if it was a, a city person or the event person.
Do you know what the event was?
Was it some kind of walk that they had on a Sunday morning?
All right, well, they're supposed to report to the Neighborhood Board. They don't have to come to the Neighborhood Board, but these events are supposed to, um, um, they're supposed to notify the Neighborhood Board that they are happening. And I guess we should, Derek, uh, maybe that's something, uh, that's a parks issue. Um, but maybe you can kind of, if possible, check into it. Whatever the event was, it was last Sunday. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, um, is our, is Senator Chang's, Joseph, you're back? With your earbud, earbuds?
Yes.
Okay, one more time? Are you muted? We can't hear you. Yeah, we can't hear you. Better without the headphones. So I think if you can just, um, I don't know, if you have a mic, whatever you're talking into, if you can just kind of stay close to it, have your mouth stay close to it and give it a try.
All right, here we go. Trying to-
Okay.
Pressure. All right, there you go. All right, so there's links to the newsletter, which I will put in the chat. Uh, also, you can, uh, for that's for the Housing Newsletter and for the Monthly Newsletter. The Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, DCCA, is warning of deceptive solutions being sent to registered Hawaii businesses. Uh, solicitation, sorry. Fake solicitations give instructions on how to receive their official certificate of status from entity called GA Business Compliance. These solicitations are not official documents issued to businesses by the state of Hawaii. If you own a business, you can monitor your business information at, uh, uh, just the eHawaii.gov, and I'll link that also. And if you are unsure about legitimacy of business mail you receive, you can also contest the Business, uh, Division at eight oh eight five eight six two seven two seven, or Breg, B-R-E-G, at DCCA.Hawaii.gov with any questions. And lastly, our office is hiring for the 2024 Legislative Session, and you can apply at www dot capital dot Hawaii dot gov, uh, backslash S-J Jobs. Uh, and I will also link that last thing into the chat. Thank you very much. Sorry about the technical issues.
Okay. Um, any questions, uh, for Stanley Chang's office from, um, board members? Okay, any questions, uh, from residents and other attendees? Okay, there's a Katie Shi.
Hello, yes, thank you. Um, I don't see the links. Oh, okay, now I see the links in the chat. Um, okay, thank you. Um, I understand, um, Senator Chang had a workshop yesterday on housing. And is that right? Was it yesterday?
Uh, yes, a, uh, like a, a online conference, yes.
Oh, okay. Um, is it possible to watch a recording of it? Cause I missed it.
Uh, we are going to put that up on the, the newsletter. I believe there will be a copy of that. Um, and we, I'm fairly certain that we, we have a YouTube Live recording, and so that will be out shortly. So that should be up on both the Monthly Newsletter for, uh, December as well as the Weekly Housing Newsletter.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll move on. Uh, any other Residents' Community Concerns? Okay, there being none, we'll now move on to, uh, Board Business, Unfinished Business Presentations. Um, um, I think, Sylvia, you, um, you reviewed the Thursday, October nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-
Yes.
Okay, um, the Chair will, um, any further additions, deletions, modifications, changes to those minutes from any other board members? I know Sylvia corrected some, uh, spelling and, and, uh, format issues. Okay, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. As corrected by Sylvia.
All motion.
Okay, thank you. Second? Thank you, Brian. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, there being no nays, that passes. Uh, the next Board Business, uh, the One Thousand One-Time Fund for Outreach, um, Kahala Mall for venue. Uh, any further work or ideas on that subject?
Uh, nothing further, uh, from the last time. Uh, Pedro was, uh, working to see if we could get the venue for, um, sharing about the Neighborhood Board and looking at the different types of items we could get depending on the, um, the theme of the, of the, um, of meeting with the people, disaster preparedness or something to that effect and getting, um, giveaways, uh, for that, for awareness of Neighborhood Board, um, ongoings.
Okay, maybe ideas on fixing, uh, Kilauea or no need to fix Kilauea as Chair Waters, uh, mentioned. Um, alternative venues for Neighborhood Board meetings? I guess we don't have any further follow-
Nothing follow-up right now. Um, I think, uh, things are okay right now. We haven't had any, um, action in that area, uh, to move forward at this point. So, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's go to the next item, Presentations, uh, Resolution Regarding Fire Risks to Homes in Their District. I'll give the Chair over to Martin. Are you there, Martin?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, loud and clear, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, at the, at the last meeting, uh, I had presented, uh, for the second time, a resolution for the Board to consider relating to the fire hazards of Diamond Head Road, of Diamond Head, excuse me. And on the agenda it says fire risk to homes in the district, actually fire risk to homes, uh, in Diamond Head, uh, or around Diamond Head because not just, um, our Neighborhood Board, but another Neighborhood Board that also orders Diamond Head, um, park. Um, I had, uh, as instructed by Ms. Smith Kahali last time, I forwarded her the draft of the resolution, uh, referring to illegal campers and had asked her to forward that on to DLNR and the Fire Department so that they would be able to have representatives here to discuss, uh, what the risks are and what could be done. Um, I don't see any, uh, representatives from DLNR here relating to addressing the risks of fire at Diamond Head. Uh, and we did talk to the Fire Department earlier. Since the last meeting we've had, uh, there are some other things that have happened. The Mililani Malka Fire, uh, which happened in a, uh, mountainous area and, uh, was not extinguished for a number of days. And then also, as we heard just at the beginning of this meeting, we also had a brush fire on the slopes of Diamond Head, beginning in the slopes. And so that was a report by the Fire Department. So I think that it's pretty clear that the risk of fire in Diamond Head is something that's very, very clearly predictable and, uh, quite likely, as a matter of fact. There, I know that, um, Hawaiian Electric has said on Maui and other places that is thinking about de-powering lines in high-wind events in order to reduce fire risks. Um, that would not necessarily help with respect to people making illegal campfires in a very fuel-laden landscape. If you drive up Twenty-second Avenue and hit Diamond Head Road, take a right and go towards the Diamond Head, uh, entry, lookout entry, you will see along that entire stretch that you have non-native grasses, which are tusks of grass, which are three feet long, uh, with, underneath the kiabi trees. Huge amounts of festooned grass all over the place, a huge fire hazard. Nothing has been done with respect to that. And it's something that raises concerns because we do have high-wind events occasionally. And when we have high-wind events, it doesn't take a scientist, rocket scientist, to see, oh, uh, some of these catch fire and there's going to be fire all over and the trees will catch fire. So at this point, we don't have DLNR to, about what steps they're taking to reduce the risks of fire. Um, I'd rather deal with prevention than reaction. Fire Department is reaction. I think prevention is a major issue, but we don't have DLNR here to, uh, issue. So given that we already have a brush fire on Diamond Head this past month, as well as we see what happens with Mililani Malka Fire and, uh, DLNR not being here, it's something which I think is an urgent, uh, matter to address. So I suggest we keep this on the agenda for, uh, January because we need to have DLNR coming by and, uh, addressing things because that was my sense of what the Board wanted to hear from, uh, last month. And I did what I tried to do, what, what I was asked to do, which is forward on the, uh, uh, resolution to the Neighborhood Board Assistant, and they showed forward on to DLNR and Fire Department and request their comments, and I haven't heard anything. So that's the status of what's going on now. I apologize for not being there in person, but I'm not feeling that well today. Any questions?
Can I respond about the resolution?
Uh, yeah, please, go ahead, Dylan.
Hi, Martin, this is Dylan. Um, yeah, Judy was the Neighbor Assistant for this Board for a while. Um, Judy did bring it up to me, but we have our internal policy of assisting the Boards, and we do not distribute draft resolutions to the list of intended recipients that are listed on the resolution. And it's as simple as the Board needs to take their action first, and then we assist them in pushing out the information that was approved by the Board. If it's not approved by the Board, we don't send it out. So that's probably why you haven't gotten a response in that sense. But you, as a resident, are more than welcome to reach out to those departments. Thank you.
Yeah, well, Dylan, uh, assuming we don't send the proposed resolution, I could, I see that policy. But are, can you assist in getting someone from DLNR here for the January meeting? Just say we'd like to have, uh, information about, um, you know, what the DLNR's, uh, view or attitude about fire risk in Diamond Head is?
Um, it is possible to give some assistance. Uh, if it was a city department, we have the contacts clearly labeled out. Um, but that's a city, or sorry, state.
Right.
So I'm not sure I would have a much better contact. So I'm not sure I would have a much better contact, um, than simply Googling D L N R and look, reaching out to someone in that office or giving their office a call and then trying to work through the web. But as the chair, you are the, you are the representative of the board. So in terms of invites, it would be best coming from yourself and not the neighborhood assistant, which falls under the Neighborhood Commission office.
Mm-hmm.
So we can assist in, if it's city, we're happy to get you the contact information, but the formal request should come from the board.
Right, okay. Well, Martin, you, you want to do some spade work? I mean, contact D L N R and, uh, you know, inform them that, uh, you know, the chair of this board will be, uh, formally asking if someone can come to the January meeting. Um.
I think, I think Bert wanted to add a.
Oh, Bert, yes, maybe you can.
Yeah.
I think that the people that you want to talk to are twofold. Um, in D L N R, Department of Land and Natural Resources, um, directly to Diamond Head. I think we want to talk to the State Parks Division and also perhaps Land Management Division, because of course, not all of the brush fires would be in and around state parks.
Um, sure.
For your information, I had, um, contacted, um, um, State Parks, Kurt Cottrell, administrator of State Parks. Uh, and he said that State Parks would be open to working with someone for rules about how there could be a buffer zone created on state land adjoining private property. Um, I'm not sure what he meant in terms of, you know, guidelines, but obviously, um, um, there could be many. How long, how big, when, how much to cut.
Sure.
But I'll, I'll contact State Parks and, uh, link them to you. And, um, um, presumably, uh, um, have them on the agenda for January.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that would be good.
Yeah, Chair, Chair Buck, uh, Chair, Chair, Chair Turbin, this is.
Yes.
Yeah, um, this is where the governor's representative that normally attends their neighborhood board meeting comes into play. Where whenever you need somebody from another state agency, um, you can ask the governor's rep to coordinate and have a representative from that specific state department attend your neighborhood board.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, tonight, uh, I think Mike Buck is the governor's rep, so.
Right.
Maybe you can email him and he can, um, start working with the D N R, uh, department to have someone there and just coordinate with you.
Okay, okay, that sounds like a good idea. Ryan, you.
I just wanted to make a comment, I guess. Uh, first of all, Martin, thank you very much for sharing your, um, proposed resolution. Uh, I, I read it in full. I just wanted to let you know that. I read it in full. I took some notes. And in my reading of this, I, I really came down to the conclusion is into what you're saying actually tonight, is that this is a cry out for some help related to, um, possible, you know, fire mitigation efforts, uh, in particular, in your comments in the Diamond Head area. Uh, and to the points that we're making here, I, I wholly support that we have, uh, the respective agency, D L N R, State Parks, and even more, there's information on the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization, a website that I reviewed as well. Uh, this issue prompted me to take a look at our entire district, uh, you know, in district, sub-district two uh, of our neighborhood board where I live, uh, it, it's adjacent to the hills, uh, the Wailei Hills there, Apalikoa and then uh, Kalani, uh, Kalaniiki area. I requested two reports from the, uh, Fire Department recently, waiting on the, um, on, on those reports, uh, fire reports on the Kalaniiki fire that happened some time ago, uh, two fires in that general area, just to get the perspective of, um, what happened and how did it spark, et cetera, uh, to just get, uh, more educated on this, uh, because it is very important, especially, uh, a huge focus right now in, in Hawaii, uh, wildfires and such. So I just wanted to share that bit of information. I, I wholly support that we get, um, the professionals here to share what the plans are, because it's more than just wildfire. It's the, you know, it's the adjacent utilities, it is on in non-native plants, uh, fire breaks, as we just shared, it's a, a, a variety of things, um, involved in this topic. Thanks.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Brian. Okay, uh, yeah, who's, uh, Martin? Yeah, go ahead, Martin.
Actually, I don't have any further comments at this time, uh, because D L N R's not here. Uh, but I encourage everyone to think about, um, what would happen if we had a repeat of August eighth here, we have high winds, and then you have, um, uh, some kind of a spark somewhere, and, uh, what the result would be. Uh, we should know, uh, what would happen. And, uh, we've already seen what happens when there are fires on Diamond Head, and we know it's difficult terrain. And it is the symbol of Hawaii, and the reputational damage to the state from a wildfire on Diamond Head is something that we should not take too lightly. Um, but I'll reserve the rest of my comments until January, um, but I'm open to answering any questions to you, stand that I can answer them.
Um, okay, well, yeah, um, I, I'll contact, uh, I'll, I'll contact Mike Buck and, uh, ask him if he could do some, uh, spade work to get, um, uh, the right actors over for the January meeting, uh, someone from D L N R, the State Parks, uh, Department. Bert, if you can help in that regard, that would also be helpful. And, uh, but Martin, I would encourage you to, uh, contact me, uh, the first week in January, right after the new year. I mean, uh, I know a lot of offices will be closed, uh, you know, Christmas week, and they'll get back to work, um, the first of the year, after the first of the year, but we'd want to, uh, you know, get the invitations, uh, out to these people, formalized that first week in January. So Martin, I'll need your help too, okay?
All right, thank you very much.
All right, we'll keep this on the agenda.
Uh, about Martin's concerns, uh, Martin, uh, my firm has begun to import, uh, these automated robotic mowers from Taiwan, um, which have the ability to maintain zones twenty-four, seven, all day, every day. And so there's technology out there that can, you know, really help limit the expenses on the state sides, actually even help them cut costs comparative to what they're already doing. You add in native plants into that, and, you know, we're looking at extreme fire break measures, which could really help, you know, address not just your concerns, but I know the concerns that all of our communities having. Um, so however, we can be of assistance too. I mean, the technology, it's cheap, it's readily available, and it's easy to implement.
Well, I agree with you, except for one thing, which is that, uh, Diamond Head is a, a natural monument. And so under D L N R's rules, you're not allowed to, um, uh, do things such as, uh, cut, uh, cut the grass or whatever. And so we'd have to figure out how, and that's why we need to have D L N R here. What can you do within your existing rules to mitigate the fire hazard that's presented by the fact that it is a natural park? And it's supposed to be kept in natural conditions, yet we have these invasive species that have come in and now changed what used to be, uh, a relatively benign landscape into, uh, basically a fuel-laden landscape, um, through just, uh, well, invasive species, invasive grasses. So those are the kinds of issues that we need to look at, and I just want to make sure that don't look back and say, geez, we missed a chance here. We should have done something. Um, because it's something where it's so predictable, so predictable. As I said, I invite everyone, drive up Twenty Second Avenue, take a ride on Diamond Head Road, and drive to the Diamond Head Lookout, and you will see fistoons, fistoons of flammable grass directly underneath kiabi trees. It's just waiting for a match.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, anyway, let's, uh, we'll move on. The other.
Mike.
Oh.
Who, you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I need, uh, I need mic training. Uh, maybe I can, uh, borrow Joseph's earbuds. Uh, but anyway, unfinished business, um, D, D L N R proposal to dismantle Diamond Head Breakwater Makaiav Daris Duke Foundation. Well, uh, haven't heard anything further on that. Um, and then B, uh, Tommy already talked about and others, including Brian, the primary urban center development plan moved to East Honolulu region. We'll keep that on. Now, the next regular board meeting, well, first of all, everybody have a, you know, terrific holiday season. We deserve it. Deserve that little vacation in December. Uh, the next regular meeting, uh, of the Wailei Kahala Neighborhood Board, number three, will be held on Thursday, January eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Okay, no meeting in December. Celebrate the holidays. Now, before we adjourn, I did get, um, uh, Dylan was good enough to bring, uh, some items of mail to me, uh, before this meeting, and, uh, I'll just go over them very quickly. One is, uh, you know, the Wailei Country Club is, is informing, um, the neighborhood board that once again, they'll apply for a special liquor license for the twenty twenty-four Sony Open in Hawaii, January seventh to fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, and of course, the application allows the club to sell liquor to the public and guests to attend the Sony Open in various hospitality tents, skyboxes, and then the clubhouse. And it's been going on, the special license has been going on over the past fifty-seven years. Um, and, um, well, clubs' regular, club licenses will be held in abeyance during this period. Any questions? Call, uh, the general manager, Russ Onizuka, seven four eight four two oh eight, oh eight. And they, they do have, Wailei has a new general manager, this Russ Onizuka, who apparently, uh, is related to the astronaut, um, the Big Island astronaut. Um, now, there was another, uh, letter from actually, uh, Kahala Nui. Um, uh, a letter from, uh, from Kahala Pacific Management for Board, uh, Kahala Nui Management, City and County Residential Code Enforcement, and they sent a complaint over to the Hawaii State Department of Health and Law Enforcement Agencies on November seventh about, uh, you know, kind of, uh, um, a troublesome home at thirteen forty-two Huakoa Place, uh, where they put up tarps, um, to kind of hide what's going on in the home, and the, um, the, uh, they did, the Hawaii State Department of Health and Law Enforcement Agencies did require them to take the tarps down, but now they've got boxes up there, um, kind of obscuring what's going on there. And, um, they're worried about human trafficking or other illegal activity. Um, so if anybody's interested in this, uh, contact, uh, Kahala Nui, probably the best idea. And one other.
What was the address again?
Oh, um.
Uh, it's on Huakoa Street, there, I know exactly, but drive by it every day. It's thirteen forty.
Forty-two.
Yeah.
Thirteen forty-two Huakoa Place. Yeah, right, right. So they're just, they want the word to go out to concern neighbors. Okay, and I'd say, yeah, you can probably, if you want to, uh, participate in these efforts, uh, contact Kahala Nui Management or the Hawaii State Department of Health and Law Enforcement Agencies. Uh, just one other, we got something. Something from the Department of Planning and Permitting, and it's a notice of application and public hearing. Um, the subject is special management area. Um, you know, Wong Residence, New Single Family Dwelling, uh, landowners and applicant, Creisha, uh, Creisha T P and Nathan B K Wong. And, uh, and I guess the work is being done, or the application is being presented by Whale, W H A L E Environmental Services, Mark Howland. And there'll be a public hearing on this application Friday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, ten AM at the Inahaina Public Library, fifty-two forty-six Kalani onioli Highway. So Publix is invited to attend. Um, and you can pick up project materials at the Fossey Municipal Building, six fifty South King Street, first floor. Okay, um, so that, and then there's one other. So this. Okay, uh, Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, um, they're sending absences notice, Dear Rich Turbin. Okay, hmm, there, I guess I'm getting, we're getting our hands slapped. Our attendance records indicate that your organization has not attended eight citizen advi- advisory committee meetings. This notice is being sent to you in accordance with, you know, the bylaws of the Citizen Advisory Committee. Let it, let them know if we, if we think that their records are an error. The next meeting is scheduled for December sixth, twenty twenty-three at two thirty PM via MS Teams or in person at Oahu, M, Oahu Ampo Office, Large Conference Room, seven oh seven Richard Street, Suite two hundred. So if anybody would like to attend, um, there's an invitation. Okay, I'll keep these letters up over here on my desk if anybody wants to look at them further. Is there anything else, um, for the good of the order?
Yeah, I, I would like to recognize Dylan Buck. I, I think he did an incredible job for stepping in today. I think like to welcome him to our board, and thank you very much for all your service.
Oh, very good. Colin, thank you. I, yeah, I, I agree. I agree.
Chair, could I just address the Google Drive?
I'm sorry.
Could I make a comment about the Google Drive?
Oh, yeah, please, yeah.
Uh, so on the agenda, um, below the meeting link, there's meeting materials. It's within that box. Um, and what I'm sharing screen for everyone online right now is all the documents that are in there. I believe your board already had one. Judy created one a few months ago. This was one, we'll call it owned by our office administration email, and we do that just so the board can continue using this. You'll see that there's a, um, a storage limit of fifteen gigs. Well, if we need to pay, we will to keep all the documents going for your board.
Mm-hmm.
So whatever was in Judy's old one, I'm going to transfer into this new one, but you can use that link at the top of the agenda and access everything you just read. So everyone that's online at home, you can see all these documents. Um, and that's about it.
Good, yeah. So, uh, Dylan, will you be handling us for the, the next meeting or, or here on out, or how, how does that work?
Not likely. Um, I have my handful of the other boards that I manage. Uh, we're currently just short staffed. We're two, um, neighborhood assistants short, so that's ten boards roughly that need to be covered. So we're all just picking up the slack. And we have a few potential hires coming in, and we're hoping to get people in December so that they can all start fresh in January. But most likely, you will have a new person, and I may, I may be joining them and training them in that process.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll see if I'm here next month or January.
Well, thank you for your help.
Appreciate it.
Uh, we really appreciate what the, uh, Neighborhood Commission's office is doing. All right, so nothing else for the good of the order? So please have a happy holidays and a, uh, fun, uh, fun holiday season. And, um, we'll look forward to getting together again in, in January. Okay, aloha.